Coming and being here and joining us and we'll catch you later. Thank you.
Hey everybody, I'm Luis Villa, your Communications Coordinator for the City of Maricopa. I'm joined with Nathan Steele, the Director of our Economic Development Department, and we're here at Sonoran Creek Marketplace where the options here are getting a little sweeter with the opening of Crumble Cookie here in the City of Maricopa. So, thank you for joining us Nathan. Tell us what goes into the backend? Some of our people may not know how to get one of these popular franchises here in our community.
Yeah, well, all of this is years in the making frankly, and not just with Crumble, but when you look at all of the tenants that are coming to Sonoran Creek and across the entire city, all of it is years in the making. That starts with the landowners, the property owners, the developers, as well as all of the city planners and economic development professionals getting together to make these deals work, make these packages work. When it comes to individual tenants like Crumble, like Maude, like Jimmy John's, like ATI and all the others here in Sonoran Creek, they're looking at the overall growth of the city. They love seeing the new homes. They love seeing the apartments. They want that diversity of housing because they know that's what's going to produce the workforce housing that they need. Everyone is always asking me, and as part of my job, I'm talking to developers and retailers on a daily basis, and one of the questions these groups are always asking me is where are my employees going to live? And they love seeing that we're building new homes, building new rooftops daily. All right, and that's what's bringing these businesses in. And I'll tell you, it's not going to stop with these. There's more and more talks we're having, more and more users coming. That's super exciting. If we look at more of Sonoran Creek, this is just some of the more and more ones that are going to be coming. Take a look at Sprouts, you see all of those inline shops with a restaurant on the end cap and Marshall's is going to be on the other end cap. And then, just as this building over here that has Maude Pizza, Crumble, Jimmy John's and ATI has multiple tenants, this other building under construction is another multi-tenant building where you can expect several more shops to join the Maricopa family.
Wow, that's an incredibly expansive addition to our community. It's a very exciting time to be a resident of Maricopa. Hey, for more information on what's new and coming here in your community, check out whatsumericopa.com.
Two-year-old Mia Preston is the picture of unbridled joy.
Oh, that's pretty. That's so pretty.
This picture shows Mia gliding with an eerie, eerie grin during her first swim lesson. It's an image Mia's mother can cherish forever, especially when she compares it against the one taken just 43 days earlier.
They say it takes 21 seconds for a child to lose, to go unconscious in the water.
For Mia, those seconds of misfortune happened while her family was on vacation. She was playing with her siblings when in a moment of distraction, Mia slipped out a back door and fell into the pool.
She basically drowned. My husband had to pull her out of the pool and administered CPR.
Mia's father continued that CPR for over 20 minutes until paramedics arrived and got Mia's heart beating again on its own. But Mia's battle was just beginning. She would spend nine days in the ICU, nine days during which her parents not only didn't know whether she'd survive, but also if she'd ever be the same.
Who's that? Who's that Mia? Who's that? Who's that?
Marsh Bear.
Marsh Bear.
Marsh Bear. Should we open it?
Come back and hide.
Against the odds, Mia's condition improved and miraculously, she's now on the road to a full recovery, a road that included a quick return to the water.
As soon as Mia got out of the hospital, the first thing I wanted to do was get her back into the water because she loved swimming and we were really nervous that this accident would have prevented her from probably ever swimming again.
The more frequent outcome is a story that's become far too familiar for Arizona families and one the City of Maricopa is determined to rewrite with a program called Maricopa Swims Safe in the Water.
The Maricopa Swim Safe in the Water Program is designed for kids and essentially the purpose of that is to start teaching kids at an early age how to be able to assist themselves in the instance that they fall into the water.
Suspended during the pandemic, the program is now making a comeback. Participating elementary schools bus first graders to Copper Sky for their immersive classes.
This is four 45-minute sessions. The first 10 minutes we go over talking about water safety and going through our Safety Ranger program. And then we spend the rest of time in the water, going from not being comfortable to put their face in the water to being able to jump in the deep end, float on their back and get it out of the water safely.
The goal is to eventually expand the program throughout the district and invite charter schools into the pool as well. In order to get there, the community has the chance to suit up.
We can't do it without instructors and we pay pretty decent and it's a lot of fun. You get a free Copper Sky membership. We can't do these programs without instructors. So I hope anybody seeing this that has three or four hours open in their morning or early afternoon can come by and learn how to be an instructor.
Knowing that what I'm doing is ultimately going to help them in the long run, there's no better feeling like it.
A feeling of satisfaction for instructors and a sense of security for families like the Prestons who found in Mia's story, a new conviction for these life-saving skills.
CPR certification and swim safety with lessons is like, that's all we could advocate. We'll use her platform and her story to sell that for the rest of our lives.
Swimming.
Hold on Casey, pull this up. Hey, Maricopa, it's me Sergeant Hal Cooser. I'm here with my friends here at the Police Department. We've got a brand-new tool that's going to help our officers out on the street keep everybody safe. It's called a Bolo Wrap.
We're implementing Bolo Wrap for the first time at MPD. It's a new technology that doesn't use pain compliance to work. Prevents us from using Taser, Baton, Pepper Spray, which are pain compliant.
Thank you for being here this evening and welcome to the regular City Council Meeting of February 7th, 2023. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Where first have an invocation, I invite Pastor Gary Williams from Journey United Methodist Fellowship to give the invocation, after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance given to us by Councilmember Gettle. Thank you, and will you all rise if you're able?
Good evening, everyone. Please join for a word of prayer. Precious Lord, I ask for your presence at this meeting of the Maricopa City Council. The city is growing rapidly and that growth requires many decisions that impact both current and future residents. Give the council and support staff the wisdom to research their options and the patience to hear multiple points of view. May those who address this body tonight do so with respect and courtesy. In your most holy name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, interior republic which stands on a nation of God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far.
Thank you. You may be seated. That'll take us to roll call.
Councilmember Gettle.
Present.
Councilmember Learman. Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beedello. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. And thank you Pastor Williams for the invocation and Councilmember Gettle for the Pledge of Allegiance. I appreciate that. That'll next take us to proclamations in which we have one. Whereas diversity of social identity, including racial and cultural identity contributes positively to the development of society and is a matter of pride and celebration. And whereas Americans of African descent have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was adopted to honor and affirm the importance of the history of African-Americans and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped bring our nation, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas, the City of Maricopa continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Now I, therefore Nancy Smith, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the City of Maricopa, Arizona, and we encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating the significance of African-American culture in its past, present, and going forward into the future. This was brought forward by Councilmember Wade, so I'd like to also give him an opportunity to speak to you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Council Meeting. African-Americans have contributed greatly to the development and the history of our country and have been, it should be recognized as such. In the City of Maricopa, it is stated that the African-American population per capita is the largest here in the City of Maricopa and than it is in many cities in the state of Arizona, the largest in the state of Arizona. So it's something to be proud of. Our community is, as our community grows, it grows with all of its citizens and participates with all of its citizens. And I for one, will certainly continue to part, to look at it at a positive aspect of, our positive aspects of growth and development here in the City of Maricopa. And I hope that you will also take the opportunity to learn more about African-American history, take it as a lesson of pride, take it as a lesson of support, and take it as a lesson of development. So, thank you so much for coming today and thank you very much for, and hopefully you'll practice some things of African-American history throughout the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. At this time, it'll take us to the report from the mayor and council. So I turn it over to you. Who would like to start? Councilmember Marsh.
I've been out for a few weeks with some open-heart surgery, but I did manage to keep up with my meetings with the Board of Adjournment in the county and the County Water Argmentation Authority. I got no surprises at any of those meetings, except for one. The shortage of water from the Colorado River is going to reduce the flow of the Central Arizona Project water into the central and southern part of the state, including the fields around us. That reduction in water could lead to farmers pumping more groundwater from our aquifer. And we do have a 2,000 to 3,000-foot aquifer. We're only pumping down at the 110-foot level or so right now. But excessive pumping into ag could threaten our water supply going forward. So I think we need to keep an eye on it going forward and perhaps even push for legislation to restrict or control various parties' access to that aquifer. So I'll be keeping an eye on it for you. Anybody else who wants to sit in on these meetings, give me a holler. They're fun and interesting. And that's about it. Thanks.
Councilmember Marsh, anyone else? Councilmember Manfredi.
I promise I'll get the Facebook fixed eventually. That keeps calling me Vice Mayor. That is the Vice Mayor. Please make sure to send all your emails to Rich. In the last couple of weeks, we've attended a lot of meetings for transportation things. One of them is a PRTA meeting, which talks a little bit about Prop 416 and 417 and a bill that we're running that hopefully we can get passed. So if you have time and you want to write letters, please write letters about HB 2013. That allows us to get the money, the $80 million, through PRTA that was collected for Prop 416 and 417, and get it back into Penal County projects. Now, I like the state. I love the state of Arizona. I don't trust the state of Arizona to take that money and use it for projects within Penal County. I want to make sure it's used here because it was collected from us, the taxpayers of Penal County mostly. So that's an important bill. We need to make sure that we're working to ensure that money is coming towards us here. We're working on a couple of other bills to do some projects throughout the state, the city, that impact the city through Rural Transportation Advisory Council. And we have a couple of other bills that are going through the process that are working for $18 million on the SR 347 and how we can do some work out there that will alleviate some of the traffic messes without the extra lanes, which we know we have no money for. Right? So there's a lot of work going on at the state Capitol to help the City of Maricopa. But there's also a lot of work going on at the state Capitol to hurt the City of Maricopa. And usually, we, we, we don't like to pick fights at the account, at the state level regarding some of these, but one of them is that food taxes. So the City of Maricopa collects a lot of money in food taxes. So when you buy food, you get taxed and we collect money and we use that money for things like police and fire and of course, transportation and everything else that we do in the city. So the impact of losing the ability to tax food in the City of Maricopa would cost us millions upon millions of dollars over the course of the next 10, 20, 15, 20 years. There's also, the state wants to have more control over our zoning rights here in the City of Maricopa because they believe they know more about what we should be doing than we do. So the state wants to control our zoning rights. The state also wants to take away our right to tax rental properties because as we all know, rental properties, you know, they're, they're coming, they're here. And without the ability to tax those rental properties, we lose the ability to provide some of the services that are required in those, some of those rental properties. So the state believes that they are our parents and they're going to make sure that we do what they want. We have to work as a city, as a community, to make sure that our state legislature is listening to what we need. And what we need, of course, is local control. I laugh at times when I hear people run for state office and they talk about local control because they're talking about the federal government. And they're like, "We hate the federal government. We want control here in the state." And then they get into the State House and they believe that local control now stops with them. And unfortunately, it doesn't. I was in Sprouts yesterday and I was having a conversation about some stuff happening in the city with some folks who had no idea I was a council member. And they were ranting and raving about council and saying that we're doing bad stuff here in the city. And I had to break the news to them that I'd been a council member for eight years. And they were like, "No clue." It was pretty funny. But some of the stuff that we get restricted on comes from the state. And if the city could do what it should be doing, and that is listening to the people of the community that lives here and responding to their needs directly, it makes for a better localized government, a more responsive government. So please, when you hear some of this stuff, talk to your legislators and make them understand that the city is local government. You are our bosses and you are the local government that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Anyone else? Well, I have a couple of things I'd like to share with you. I've always shared with you since the time I was appointed as mayor, and even before that, transportation was a huge priority for me. As mayor, it's my number-one priority. I love that we're talking about transportation at the city council meetings as often as there is new news because it is so critical to us. So I want you to know that I've been at the Arizona ADOT State Transportation Board in Sierra Vista this past month. And there, we talked about the guidelines for getting on the ADOT five-year plan. It's quite a challenge to figure out the process for getting on this five-year plan, but I'm there each and every time, either online or in person, and it's important to me and we're going to figure out how to get the funding necessary. We also had a very important meeting with DPS that I think you'll be hearing from, from our communication folks. I asked both DPS and ADOT, what is the low-hanging fruit for safety on 347? Because we know we need widening, we know we need projects, but we're looking for the funding. But what is the low-hanging fruit? Because, and I think I shared with you before, I used November where there were three weeks, eight times the road was closed, and two unfortunate fatalities and separate incidences. And I used that. Plus, I used the fact that when the road is closed, of those that use 347, which is 76% of our families that travel to and from work using 347, that's the potential for 76% of our families to be stuck on the road instead of home with their families. And where are their children? And that speaks volumes to these groups. So in speaking with the DPS, it was a fantastic, it was pretty impressive. There were four of them, all dressed in uniform, from top level down to the Penal County level. And they took our request to meet with them very seriously. And the one thing that they could definitely promise, and you may have already seen evidence of this because I know they've been out on 347 at least four times in the last 10 days, one time en masse with marked and unmarked cars. And they asked me if I knew that, because we asked them, listen, there are serious violators out there. We want you to be patrolling. We want you to stop. We want you to ticket. And they asked me if I was serious about it, and both myself and City Manager Horst said absolutely. And they said, "Well, we could create some anger." And I'm like, "Only those that get stopped. The rest of us are going to be very excited." So I'm giving you forewarning that they have promised that they'd be out there at least once a week, either in the morning during rush hour, in the evening during rush hour, or on the weekend, and sometimes en masse, in unmarked cars and marked cars. And we have given them permission to give the tickets for the serious violators. We have to do something to save our people and stop the accidents that are happening. So I thought that was a very good meeting from DPS. I also attended the Senior Info Expo, and if you're ever looking for information on seniors, fantastic job by our staff. It was overwhelming in the first hour how many people were there. I think they came from all around the region because it was very packed, lots of great information, and very well done. I also went to the groundbreaking at Lakeview Park. Yes, I said groundbreaking of Lakeview Park. We're going to have a new park. It'll be in Rancho El Dorado, the lakes, and it'll have ballfields and a Ramada or two and places for kids to play. It's going to be fantastic. But that was a lot of fun because it just reminds me of the opportunity to bring community together and for kids in that area especially to just be able to come and gather and play some ball on the fields. As I mentioned, I've been to the Capitol two times in the last couple of weeks. Once for the ARTAC Legislative Day, which was three projects that we have on for the City of Maricopa within the city limits. And so we have high hopes for those. And then one for HB 2063, which is 19 million, which is very critical. It's 6 million for the design of State Route 347 and 13 million for improvements on State Route 238. That design is important because when it's done, when we find the revenue, and we will find revenue for widening, then it'll be ready to go because the design is already done. And design typically takes approximately a year. So it's not something you want to wait for when you've got the cash on hand to actually do the widening. So that bill passed, actually, that bill passed 11 to 0 out of the transportation. And then another bill, which I didn't bring forward And then another bill, which I didn't bring forward the number with me, passed 11-0 out of transportation. And that's for two projects on 347 that will help make flow of traffic on 347, even without the widening, much better. And later on, we can go into details on that. But my important message here, and I'll bring up an interaction that I had with a resident this week. If you think us asking you to get involved doesn't make a difference, I have an example that just happened yesterday that makes a beautiful difference. Had a constituent ask me about the potholes on State Route 238. And with some back-and-forth communication with our staff and ADOT, we figured out it actually belonged to ADOT. And I went out there, drove, took pictures. It was serious. And they're already planning on coming out for filling those potholes. This is ADOT, sometime this week. And I'm looking forward to going out there and taking pictures and sending it to the constituent. But my point being, this constituent joined me in sending messages to ADOT. And I have the information. If you're so inclined to help me get involved or help get involved, he sent his personal message to ADOT and they responded quickly and in a way that, as I indicated, they're gonna come and fill those potholes hopefully this week. So it makes a difference. And so when I ask you, when Councilmember Menfrenny asks you or any of the council members, "Get involved in these bills." If you want to know the names of the bills, what bills to get involved in, what bills to send your legislators, send me an email. Send Councilmember Menfrenny or any of us an email. And we'll let you know which ones to get involved in because it's critical and it does make a difference. So I want you to know that. I also attended MUSD State of the District. And Dr. Lopman is here. What a phenomenal job. And I have to tell you, I was so impressed by the teachers that she also brought forward to speak and the students. We have some amazing students. And I'm excited that the media has now picked up on the fact and done some stories on these amazing students. And the more we share that, the more we realize what successes they are having at MUSD. So a phenomenal State of the District meeting with Dr. Lopman. And, gosh, I'm sorry. I'm going on and on, but there were so many exciting things. At the Maricopa High School Performing Arts Center, the Maricopa Friends of the Library helped, and Councilmember Learman and myself helped start that group. And we had our first fundraiser last year and we raised $10,000 to help them buy a piano. And we were just expecting a quality, upright piano. And when we went to the delivery of the piano, wow. They actually had a grand, not a baby grand, a grand piano, beautiful, black with gold interior, delivered to them with the help of Southwest Piano as well in terms of partnering with us. And what a huge success. Now the Performing Arts Center has this beautiful, and they played and they sung, and it's beautiful. And so that's a huge success of how we work as a community in the city of Maricopa. It's pretty awesome. Let's see, anything else? Oh, one last thing. I've had so many truly amazing experiences. And I know you probably expect me to be up here and bragging about our staff. But if you could be in the meetings that I'm in and understand the quality of what I'm seeing, such as the Senior Info Expo, some work that I did in talking with Public Works, the first review that the Budget Committee of City Council Members had with our staff and the quality of work that not only our Finance Department did on our first view of the CIP, but the staff and every department that supported that, they made it so easy to walk through the priorities of the city. We could agree, disagree. But they made it perfectly logical and easy. And I'm so impressed with them. And as I indicated, public safety. And had some interaction with them yesterday. I loved it, both fire and police. Wonderful conversations. And we also had a lunch with the City Manager and myself and wonderful conversations with all of those that were there, talking about the things that concern them and hearing back from either myself or the City Manager. It was wonderful. And Development Services as well. So just some really cool stuff going on. And I'd love to share with you, but I better stop there. Oh, tomorrow morning? What time? 9 o'clock is the groundbreaking for our new police department. Thank you for the reminder. And so if you'd like to come, it's gonna be held just right out on Bolin and the name of the street that leads you in here, which I can't remember. There you go. 9 o'clock. So if you'd like to be there, groundbreaking for the new police department. Thank you very much. All right. So that's your report from the council and mayor. At this time, I'll move to the report from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate a few minutes of your time tonight. Let the slide get up. You know, social media at times can be a great forum for public debate, to challenge the status quo and to present new ideas. But its value has diminished if it starts with a premise of misinformation. So tonight, I wanted to just clarify a few things from that point of view and then just provide a few updates on some of the other things that we're doing in the city, if I might. So let me see if this... Yes. So begin with, we've heard a lot about Copper Sky and selling of parkland for commercial development. So I wanted to present this slide tonight, starting with the parcel that's yellow up in the corner. That parcel on this map, which was the map that was presented way back when, says private property on it. But in May of 2019, the city purchased it for the purpose of development opportunities. It was never part of the parkland's initial purchase. And we now know, and you'll see in the slide momentarily, I believe, that that's where the hospital and Surgery Center and those things will be able to come in fruition of the council's desire to make sure that that was a good development. The balance of the land was purchased via bond in March of 2010 for future park and commercial development. So if you look at what I will call the mustard color areas of the map, and again, this was the map presented way back in 2010 timeframe, it says right on there, "Commercial Development." And so all of that area was designed for commercial development. And the piece to the south of Martin Luther King Boulevard includes the new La Quinta Hotel. The... In... A sec bond was taken out in, let's see, May of 2013, which actually provided the funding to actually build the Park Park, which is the greenish area, the remainder of the park. The only difference to that is in August 2nd, August 3rd of 2021, we talked about the dog park and the fact that it had so much traffic flow in front of it that it had better opportunities. And we presented to the public in a public meeting of that time that we would like to commercialize that property and create three additional dog parks throughout the city. So I wanted to update people on the status of that tonight, as well as you, the City Council. So I had a little fun with it. So forgive me if my, you know, barks and recreation dog barks. So again, on August 3rd, staff presented to the City Council a multi-dog park option with a transition plan to match or exceed the current acreage in the park. The plan was to create smaller parks in and around our community for ease of access and less travel requirements. We indicated there'd be at least three locations being planned, each within approximate two-mile radius. So now, it takes anywhere from four to six to eight miles to get to the current single park. Most everyone should be within a two-mile radius. Some exceptions, but for the large part, that would all be there. And the current park constitutes roughly three acres. And the proposed three parks would be a little bit larger, four acres. So the other part of it is, we said that we would put in amenities. So this is a montage of what some of those amenities will be. It includes the benches and the things you expect to see, but it also includes some agility opportunities for the dogs, some additional shade shelters, actually, some direction signs because some of the park, dog parks, you may find the park a lot, but this will help you get to it. And these are just examples. This equipment has been ordered for all three parks. And once it comes in, we will begin to put it in place. So the three locations, well, there's the two-mile radius. And you can see the three locations where the line stops in the center of the three circles. So the first one is, was K-9 Crossing. And since we have three now, I just kind of gave it some names, at least for a holding spot. K-9 Crossing at Bacana Park. And this park fence was put up some time ago. And people say, "Why is it locked?" And we had it locked because we're waiting on the amenities, but they wanted it open, so we opened it. But the amenities are still coming. And we will install those when we can. The second location will be the area in orange called the Bark at Copper Sky, for lack of a better term. And this will also have those same amenities and will be enclosed. If I can back up for just a minute to the amenities. If you see the lower right-hand picture and you see that kind of wrought iron fence, that will actually be used in the park at Copper Sky versus Chain Link. So we'll have a nicer look to it. The Chain Link at Bacana Parks is because it's adjacent to and part of the existing fencing for the ballpark. The other one, which will be the larger of the three, will be out behind City Hall. We're working on a new park process out there and we're finalizing those. So we don't exactly know which piece of the acreage behind us, but will be there. And this is kind of a mock-up of what we can expect there. We'll have the drinking fountains for both humans and dogs, our dogs and their masters, whatever is appropriate, sitting benches, shade structures, place to run, all those type of things. So we think this has added amenities. And then this is probably the most important slide of all. We invite the public to provide input on preferred amenities by contacting barkparks@maricopa-arizona.gov. That won't go live until tomorrow, though. So if you try tonight, don't get mad. It goes live sometime tomorrow. And we welcome your comments to help us make sure that we meet as many of the needs as we possibly can of our dog owners and pet owners.
City Manager, just to check, is there truly a space between Bark and Parks?
No.
Typically not.
Typically not. That's just me being used to typing with spaces between words.
I agree. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. And there's probably not a space between Parks and the "and" either. So, no spaces. So again, you know, this map shows that, you know, most of the land that we're developing is for commercial purposes. That was its original design from day one and we're honoring that moving forward. So I also wanted to talk about that first 10 acres that we bought in 2019. It's been announced that it will include a medical campus with the ER and hospital with medical offices, luxury lofts, extended stay suites, and physical therapy and sports psychology. And if you've been by there, you've seen the construction fence up and you've seen some heavy equipment sitting out there. They're ready to get going with their grading permit. They're waiting on the final permit for stormwater from Penal County. And when they get that, they'll start going. Their buildings are being submitted for review by staff for building permits, which will come a little bit later down the line. So again, this is a great amenity. And then the Innovations Campus, where the dog park was and being replaced with the three dog parks, will include an Innovation Center, Life and Science Center, residential tower, apartment homes, Sports and Science Academy, Baker Shop, and Movie Academy. And the... What all that means? We'll let the developer explain as he comes forward with what all that means. I'm not sure that means Robert Redford will be here making movies, but maybe it does. I don't know. We'll find out. I think it's really more to help people learn the skills and I'm sure there'll be opportunities to work with our local students and others with that project. Shea Connolly has purchased that centerpiece on Martin Luther King. And this is not new. This has been out there for a while. The picture to the right is the Senior Living project. It was pretty much ready to go and then COVID hit. And of course, all of a sudden, nursing homes, assisted living centers was a big thing. And so they had to go back and restructure and replan the whole thing. So each room now has its own air circulation. And so if these things happen in the future, we don't have to kick our seniors out of their residences. Since then, the company that was doing it got acquired by another larger company. But we think this particular piece is getting real close. They're approved for everything except for the building permit. So they're real close to getting done. The balance of it is, and this is not what they're building. This is just a concept for not having a big question mark there. But it will be similar in that it will have retail on the bottom with some of a multifamily on top. These are market rate units. And they did increase their program from 16,000 square feet of retail to about 20. This, of course, is just still concessual and not near as far along as the other. And as I've said before, an application doesn't mean it's gonna be approved. An autonomous doesn't mean it's gonna be built. And even if it's built, it may not get occupied like the Walgreens over here that's had empty for almost a decade before they occupied it. So as one of our councilmembers said, "When you can exchange money for produce or products, then you know they're open and they're real." Also wanted to share about Maricopa Station because we hear about this all the time. What's going on? What will happen? The area to the right, where the pink color is, everything north is property owned by the city. We did issue a request for bids earlier this week. We know of two commercial developers who have expressed interest. It'll be a couple of weeks before we get their bids in. We hope we get additional bids. They now feel like the retail market is better than it was a year or two ago, partly because the cost of building is coming down. They are concerned about the cost of interest rates going up. But at the same time, they're beginning to realize that the Maricopa market is very underserved. And they are, a lot of people now interested in beginning to find a path to service our community. The piece in the pink to the south is privately held. But it's my understanding that parties that are interested in working with our land are also working with that landowner to do a collective project. It has the capacity, and I emphasize "capacity", to be about 250,000 square feet of retail. Again, once you go in and they take your money and you can take your bag out to the car, that's when it's real. But before then, this is where it all starts. But I wanted to bring your attention to the left side, too. The left side is literally right across the street, just south of the new Exceptional Health Hospital. And this is a project that just came to us a couple of days ago. And it has something like 29,000 square feet of office capability, which we have virtually none of in the city. So I thought these were two exciting projects that may have a foothold and may show real potential and opportunity for us going forward. And lastly, as City Manager, I plan to convene a study committee charged with the review and potential restructure of our standing committees, which consist of the following: our Parks, Recreation, and Library Advisory Committee, our Age-Friendly Maricopa Advisory Committee, and Cultural Affairs and Art Advisory Committee. And the intent is to... These were originally established many years ago to sit down and figure out, okay, how can we best use these good people who serve on these committees and give them more of a defined purpose and get their ideas from them so we can restructure our committees so that they can be as productive as they can possibly be and we can glean from them as much as we can glean from them? So as a study committee, I will serve on that and ask two of our staff who work with these committees already. We're gonna ask the committees to probably elect one person from their current board or committee structure to participate on that. And then I would like to invite up to three because we can't have any more than three councilmembers to serve on that, too. And I will approach you individually, if that's okay initially. And then any findings or recommendations that we come in the study committee, we will then bring forward with a formal recommendation for public review, public vetting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and either make some changes or not. But as a growing city, the structure we had put in place 10 years ago doesn't work today. And we have very talented people and we want to make sure we maximize our ability to glean from them the skill sets they have. I will have to say that I have to give Councilmember Cadel kudos on this because he's the one that put the idea in my head and said, "Shouldn't we do this?" And so it's not my idea. It's really his idea. It's echoed by our mayor. And I said, "We need to do that." It's echoed by our mayor and I said, "We need to do that." So, my initiative is based on, I work for those guys and they come up with great ideas. So, I wanted to share that with you. And that's all I have unless we have some questions or comments further.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, City Manager. That'll take us at this time to the call to the public. I do have three speaker cards and let me read the call to the public information before we start on those speaker cards. The procedure to follow is if you address the City Council, our council requests that you express your ideas in three minutes or less and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take legal action on any matters during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So, you will have three minutes after these three speaker cards. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, I'll invite you forward as well. The first speaker card I have is Elizabeth Howell.
Good evening, Council. I'm Elizabeth Howell and I'm here representing the Age Friendly Committee to remind everybody that the last Saturday in February is our annual citywide Shred-a-thon and Food Drive. So, we'll be there at Copper Sky in the north parking lot from 9:00 to 1:00. So, if you have chores to do on Saturday, come drop off your food and your paper first and then go do your chores and that'll keep that going. Thanks for fixing the sound. I thought I was heard, but I guess not. Anyway, this is our fifth year for the Shred-a-thon and the Food Drive. We are still trying to fill a truck. It holds 14 tons and the most we've been able to get is about seven and a half tons. So, bring all the paper you got. Cardboard's fine, but do not bring binders because it can't chew up the metal spine that holds the rings. Large paper clips also are not very good for it. There's a whole, there's a list of things. Basically, what we're taking is paper and cardboard and we have several groups that are coming to help unload your food, unload the trucks. If you don't wanna get out of your car, that's fine. And I think that some members of the City Council will be there. I'm looking for Vince to come. He's promised the last three years to bring paper and also stay to help, so I'm looking for you, Vince. Well, bring your leftovers. That's okay. Rich always comes and so that's great. Henry promised that he'd come this year and help, so I appreciate that, Henry. Bob, you've helped so much in the past. I appreciate that, but please stay home. And...say that aloud. I can't hear you.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everybody, this is a citywide event. It's sponsored by the Age Friendly Committee. AARP provides the truck. It's free of charge to the city and that's why we want to fill it. We want to be sure that we can continue this activity in the future. So, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much. And I look for everybody. It's the last Saturday in February from 9:00 to 1:00. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. That'll take me to the second speaker card for Mr. Kent O'John.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Smith. Good evening, City Council. I'm Kent O'John, citizen of Maricopa. I reside at 18961 North Shelby Drive here in Maricopa. I wish to ask if the council would consider reinstating the Veterans Affairs Committee? Okay? The city is 30% veterans and I feel it would be a good thing for both the city and veteran community to have some representation. Okay? That's it.
Thank you. Mr. O'John, after the meeting, would you mind speaking with City Manager Horst and give him some of your contact information and whatnot?
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That'll take us to our third speaker card, which is Ms. Tori Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Vitello, and the greatest council members in the state of Arizona. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes. I am Tori Anderson and I am here tonight on behalf of Against Abuse Incorporated to talk about the greatest event that we have all year, which is February 25th. It is our 18th Annual Seeds of Change Gala and all of the money, the funds that we raise, stays right here in the city of Maricopa. And it funds our Women and Children's Domestic Violence Shelter, but it also funds our outreach programs for those families where it's safe to be in their own home. We still do outreach programs for them and make sure that they are taken care of and that they get the services that they need. So, it serves a broader base and it's an amazing event. It is almost sold out, so if you don't have your tickets, please go to seedsofchangegala.org. You can find out information about the agency, about shelter updates, and also obviously our amazing sponsors. We have 35 sponsors this year, which really helps us keep our costs down so that we really can maximize the dollars that we raise that night. We have great silent auction items, some live auction items, live music, DJ dancing, dinner, you know? The works! The works! So, it's gonna be a great date night if you don't have a date. I'm sure we can find you one. But I hope to see everybody there. I hope, you know, that the entire city knows that these services are available. We have so many new city members that don't realize that services are available and that we do have a beautiful home and provide space to keep them safe. So, I just wanna make sure that that awareness is out there and I just want the entire city to know that they are all invited. And again, they can go to seedsofchangegala.org. They can also email me at torielanderson@gmail.com. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Tori, one quick question about the shelter. I get people asking me, "Are people allowed to drop off clothing, books, games, all the time?"
You know, they can text me. Right now, we're not taking any donations because we don't have storage space. Since we closed our thrift shop in Casa Grande, there's really no place to drop off donation items currently. We're hoping to change that very soon, but right now, we're not taking anything. But they can text me, 520-560-3665, and I can put them in contact with the shelter director. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the audience like to approach the podium and speak to council? Yes, come forward, sir. You can both come, sit in the front row. I'll call you up. Please state your name.
Hello. My name is Chad Mollino. I live on Taft Avenue. Resided in Maricopa for about the last 13 years. Recently, I had the opportunity to mostly complete a construction project on Taft Avenue. It was quite an honor to work with our city staff. They're a tremendous group of folks that we have here. The reason I wanted to get up and speak today is because I, during the construction process, I had quite a few surprises in the form of requirements that I haven't seen before with other projects I've done. These came in the form, you know, of being quite expensive and they were a surprise, an honest surprise. I got through the project. It was a little sketchy and thanks to the help of the good staff, you know, in guiding me through that process. But my request, you know, at the end of this project is, I feel like, number one, I wanna do some more projects here. And I feel like I wanna pave the way, not only for myself, but for others that are in my situation. I was an owner builder and it's kind of unique in that. But I would like to, you know, offer that knowledge that I have gained through this process in some sort of a committee, you know, perhaps with the City Manager. I would just ask the council, consider doing something like that so that we can streamline this process and make it a little more palatable going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mollin. City Manager will be connecting with you here shortly. Okay, sir, would you like to come forward, state your name?
My name is Andrew Crawford and thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you this evening. I've written them down, so I don't forget where I am. Maricopa is a great city and I've lived here with my wife Melissa and our six children for 18 years. We love Maricopa and it's been a wonderful place to raise our family. Being a Maricopa pedestrian, however, can be dangerous and being a pedestrian at a Maricopa traffic light with the signals "go ahead to cross" can be extremely dangerous. Maricopa pedestrians are vulnerable and unprotected when given the "go ahead to cross" the road. We are always at risk from being hit from the front by drivers with a solid green light permitting them to turn left across our pedestrian crosswalks. And we're always at risk from being hit from the side and behind by drivers turning right on red or green. I know this personally because in the past six months, I have at least 10 close calls with vehicles after the "go ahead to cross" a Maricopa intersection. By close calls, I mean a car, SUV, or truck has missed me by 10 feet or less. As a cyclist, my top priority is to make myself as visible as possible. I have two rear flashing lights, one 500 lumens front flashing light, and I wear a long-sleeved bright orange shirt. Even with careful observations when crossing with my bicycle, however, I still routinely have near misses when using a pedestrian crossing. I brought this safety concern about a particular Maricopa signal and pedestrian crossing to our Maricopa Police Department and then our City Hall staff who referred me to ADOT. ADOT's response to my written concern, quote, "That signal is now maintained by the city of Maricopa Public Works." So, where do I go now? Optimal traffic flow in Maricopa is a key priority. The city is growing and there are more vehicles on our roads year over year. Traffic flow, however, should never be at the expense of public safety. I and other Maricopa pedestrians need your help in the public safety space and Maricopa drivers need your help by sensitizing them to pedestrian presence and perhaps prohibiting them from dangerous maneuvers. Maricopa crosswalks cannot be an active battleground between citizens on foot and vehicles because pedestrians will always lose. I'm certain there are positive, simple, and affordable steps that we can take to raise the level of basic public safety for pedestrians here in this great city and I would welcome being part of the solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ben, would you mind giving him your card, just talking about the signalization or the crosswalks that he's referring to?
Actually, Mayor, both the police chief and Keith, who are on our Traffic Safety Committee, if you would give them your cards, please.
Sure, perfect. Perfect. Thank you very much, City Manager. Sorry, Ben, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I heard intersection and... We've talked enough intersection that... Okay, anyone else from the public like to come forward and speak to council? Seeing none, I will close the call to the public. That takes us at this time to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda includes Item 7- dot 1 through 7-6. I have no speaker cards for any of these elements. Councilmembers, do you have any questions, concerns, issues on items you'd like to have addressed? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Moved.
So moved by Councilmember Manfredi and seconded by Councilmember Wade. Do I, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Regular Agenda. I have no speaker cards on any of the Regular Agenda. Item 8 dot 1 is App 23-02 and will be presented by, let's see. Oh, that's on the council members. Thank you very much. Okay, so I believe, I know for a fact that Vice Mayor Vitello has some appointments to suggest and propose and be voted on. And before I ask him for those, are there any other council members who have some? And Councilmember Lierman. Okay, we'll come to you second. Thank you. Oh, he would like, he would like you to go first.
Mayor, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Jeannie Eteke, if you don't mind standing and introducing yourself. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I am appointing her to the Parks, Recreation, and Library Committee and I'm very impressed with her resume. She believes outdoor recreation is paramount to the mental health and well-being of our community. She has two degrees in social and behavioral science and a master's degree in human resources and employment law. She is currently the Board President for Native Health of Phoenix and a Human Resources Director for Maricopa County Community Colleges. She is an avid reader and patron of our library and I had a very nice conversation with her on the phone and I'm excited to appoint her this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Lierman. Vice Mayor Vitello.
So, I have to reappoint and I have two different appointees, so I'm gonna put them all in one if that's okay with the council?
Yes, absolutely. I think we can combine them all and have discussion.
So, for age-friendly, I'm going to appoint Carol Machovik and if I say it wrong, I apologize for that, but I'm gonna have her on age-friendly. And then I'm reappointing for the arts, I have Cynthia Portre, PRL. I'm reappointing Kevin McDill. And for P&amp;Z, I am appointing Al Juarez.
Excuse me, Al. Thank you. Council, are there any questions or concerns regarding any of these appointments? Oh, you have, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm not making any changes. I'm just reappointing.
Thank you.
Henry did his last week, right? Or two?
Last time, yes. Thank you.
So, I'm reappointing to our age-friendly, Doreen Travol. To our arts, Maria Poor. To PRL, reappointing Tom Davis. And to P&amp;Z, I'm gonna make a decision. I'm joking. Reappointing Bill Robertson. He's sitting out there, so I was gonna mess with him, but I didn't. And we're reappointing Bill Robertson to P&amp;Z and so those are mine.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so so far, I've recorded for Councilmember Lierman to the PRL, Jeannie Eteke. For Vice Mayor Vitello, for the age-friendly, Carol Machovik. And for arts, Cynthia Portre. For Parks, Recreation, and Library, Kevin McDill. For P&amp;Z, Al Juarez. And for Councilmember Manfredi, age-friendly, Doreen Travol. For art, Maria Poor. And for PRL, Tom Davis. And for P&amp;Z, Bill Robertson. Council, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, do I have a motion? So moved by Vice Mayor Vitello. A second? Second by Councilmember Marsh. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And thank you.
At this time, we'll move to Agenda 8-2. 8-2 is Presentation 23-02, which is given to us by MTA President and CEO, Christian Should I start the timer now? Oh, sorry.
Come on!
That gets a hand.
I had that one planned.
I'm a little familiar with this podium. Come on.
I'm a little familiar with this podium, come on!
I got you, didn't I?
The only thing that stands between me and you going home to watch the State of the Union address is, of course, me, so I'll stay a while. No, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, for letting me come and present tonight. Um, so, I'm just gonna give, well, I don't know, do I have a... I guess I'll just call for the next slide, there it is. I did. So thank you very much. Again, tonight I'm gonna give you, uh, an overview, and some of you sit on my board. I have, uh, Dr. Loepman in the audience, who is also on my board. Rick is on the board, and, and, uh, the mayor, and Vince, uh, Vince Manfredi, Councilmember Manfredi, and also Councilman Wade. So, some of this is going to be reviewed for you, but we're also speaking not only to you all, but also to the rest of council, as well as to the audience, right? And many people don't know what MITA is, and what it does, and how it works, and so I want to kind of convey that a little bit, as well as give you an update. Uh, we have contractual obligations with the city, and as such, we want to make sure that we're adhering to those, and I, of course, try and present those to you in, uh, regular reports, but at the same time, I also want to have you understand that, you know, there's a process through which we go through, and I want the audience to understand this, and this is kind of an economic development 101. As I continue to do these reports over the years, uh, I will continue to get more and more in-depth in them, but tonight's a little bit of an overview. So with that, we're gonna kind of start off with, you know, who and what is MITA? Well, first and foremost, this is the public-private partnership between the city and this, uh, private board, which is known as the Maricopa Economic Development Alliance. Now, the first and for, uh, most important thing to understand is that this is all about teamwork, and we're gonna hit that mantra here tonight. But we need to start with a little story. First off, this basically looks like a lump of coal, right? Now, I know Christmas time has come and gone, but, uh, it's really not coal, it's actually carbon. And one of the things that's important about carbon is that it's what eventually makes up a diamond, okay? Now, some of you may or may not know that I've been a jeweler for twenty-plus years, and in the process, I've learned a whole lot about gemstones, and gold, and diamonds, and all things mined from the earth. And it's, it's important to understand that when you're talking about diamonds, while they're gorgeous, beautiful, and highly sought after, they are not easy to find, and the, the ability for them to happen is actually an extreme rarity. And so it's, there's a lot that goes into it. First, you have to have the carbon elements that I just showed you. You gotta have coal, or coke, or charcoal, or graphite. You have to have intense heat, and it has to be applied just so. You have to have perfect pressure. You have to be the appropriate distance underneath the earth's crust, so that when the magma happens and all these things transpire, that all of these situational elements are happening simultaneously. And then you have to be in the right location environment. You can't just have it anywhere. So you have to understand that these, all these things go in to making what we know and recognize as something beautiful, but it doesn't happen easily. This is what transpires when all those things come to play. It's a large stone, but it doesn't end up staying that way, and it never can, seems to end up being ultimately that way. And in fact, when most diamonds are cut, they are cut almost in half, because you have to analyze, where is it gonna fit? What's the best refraction you're gonna get out of it? What is it that it's going to look like? And so you're gonna get the most high-quality stone that is of value to the area like anything else. So, like most stones of this size, you will see that almost sixty percent of the stone is wiped away in the cutting process. So even though we've gone through all these amazing things just to get this, we still haven't gotten to the final product yet. It's only after that, and the cutting processes by experts, and all these folks touching it, I could go into extreme detail, and I won't tonight, on how many people have to touch it before it finally makes it to your finger, or earrings, or a loved one, whatever the case might be. And that's what it looks like, but it takes a lot to get there. Folks, this is a metaphor today for economic development. Uh, city manager Horst led in very, you know, precisely, uh, in some of his explanations earlier tonight about how economic development works. It is not simple. So I want you to remember that metaphor as we go through tonight a little bit on some of the things, and see and analyze for yourself kind of where some of these things have to come into play in order to reach the ultimate goal, which is the location of a company to Maricopa, okay? So please keep that in mind. Now, first and foremost, oh, wait, who's that? Okay, so he got a hulk during the State of the City, so I guess this is what I get, I get a cupid. Look, at the end of the day, MITA is the ultimate matchmaker. That's what we do, okay? We don't control the land, we don't control the city, we don't control the decisions that the corporations make, we don't control the money, we don't control anything. So we are the matchmakers. Our job is to go out there and find and start piecing together as many of these variables as we can, and while we don't control them, we can try and bring them together. And by doing so, you present the most possible and plausible ability to ultimately reach our goal, which is success, right? The location of a large company, factory, industry, et cetera. Just as a clarifier, MITA's job is tasked primarily with looking for industry, for large semiconductor companies, for example. Think of Samsung, or Intel, or TSMC, and while that might be the tippity-top, you know, as, as the Goliaths go, you know, there's a lot of suppliers that go along with that, and there are lots of different industries out there, whether it's automotive, whether it's batteries, electric, whether it's wearables, information technology, there's so many different sectors, and there's lots of different companies that can happen. But MITA's job is to look for those, for the industry, the commercial, the warehousing. The city primarily sticks to the housing and the retail. Now, that's not to say that a small business owner doesn't come to MITA, and then we put them in contact with the appropriate folks at the city, and vice versa sometimes, right? And sometimes they will keep it, and sometimes we will keep it until that time comes right for it to pass off. In the end, this is all about sharing complete transparency between us, so that in the end we are completely aligned, and like any good general will tell you, you always want to have a multi-front war going on, because it increases your odds of success. That's the goal here. And so, as we progress, MITA is essentially the tip of the spear. So they're at the top. Now, this isn't to say that MITA is better or worse than anybody else in this diagram that I'm about to show you. It's simply to say, our job is tasked with approaching and finding and exploring the leads, and what we would call PIFs, and I'll explain that in a minute, to finding these industries. That's our job, is to go out and to look and look and connect and make relationships with, and draw them in and entice them, so that we can progress down these, through these variables, to ultimately reach the conclusion of location success, okay? The others, again, MITA tip of the spear. We couldn't do this job without the City of Maricopa's help and the Chamber of Commerce, and I'll show you why the Chamber of Commerce is an important part of this as I go through one of the next slides. There is each a role to play, and when I was speaking to the Chamber of Commerce a few months ago, one of the things that they asked me, and that I was trying to explain, is that each of us have a role to play. It's like being on a highway. We talk about transportation all the time, so being on this highway means that, it doesn't mean that, you know, we're fighting each other for the lanes, but rather, we each have a lane, and we stay in that lane, and sometimes one of us goes faster or slower, sometimes we merge between them, but in the end, we all have a role to play and a lane to stay in, and that's really, really important, that we understand that. So what I want to explain to you here is that, in the last, since I joined MITA here July first of 2022, okay? These are some numbers, I'll go over them in a second, but one of the primary roles that we fill is we spend a ton of time answering leads, okay? Because at the end of the day, anyone who's ever been in sales knows that if you do not proceed to contact every person that you can, your chance of success goes down exponentially. The more people you talk to, the more people you deal with, the more relationships you build, the more things that you can do to entice, the better chances of success that you have. That is critical. So, in this first quarter, before the turn of the interest rates going up, you saw companies very, very moving, uh, and they were adamant about looking at different headquarters, expansion, moving on different places, and so we received forty-two leads, that we answered twenty-one of them. Now, the first question out of your mouth is, well, why would you only answer twenty-one when you got forty-two, right? Well, the reality is, is I can't matchmake something that doesn't apply, and I'll explain that a little bit more in just a minute, just a minute, on a next slide. But you have to understand that sometimes, just like each of you, when you bought your homes, you were looking for something specific, weren't you? And you went down a whole list of things that you had in your mind, that you needed to satisfy in order to buy that home. And you made a decision based on all the variables out there, that you narrowed it down to a few, and then you picked one, okay? We're gonna talk about that more in a second. However, this is exactly what happens with MITA, is sometimes we receive a lead that says, hey, we're looking for an existing building of exactly one million square feet. I don't see an existing building of, of one million square feet in Maricopa that's vacant, unoccupied, and ready for move-in. If I did, we would've answered that one, but we couldn't. Does that make sense? So these are the things and the challenges that we deal with. Now, as you will see in these twenty-one, which is right about half, okay? That represented about six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven jobs for those companies that offer. Some companies will come in and say they have a hundred jobs, some will say a thousand, some will say two. These are all things that we have to look at as we decide what is the best way to go. This also then shows you some of the average wages. Those wages are important, as we know, it's not cheap to live in Maricopa anymore, is it? And so these are really important things that we look at. Now, that's not to say, and Councilmember Manfredi brought this up at our strategic planning retreat, it's not to say that, that if a company has a lower wage offering as an average, that we don't, that we don't go after it. That's simply not true. We do, we absolutely want to. However, we are also trying to categorize by the knowledge, as you go down this process, that at some point, they're gonna come to you all and say, can you give me something? And you are gonna have to decide, should that have ever gotten to you in the first place? These are some of the things that we act a little bit as a gatekeeper for. And while our gate is open, and we want as many of these things to come through as possible, we also know that sometimes it just isn't a right fit, but that's why we have different stages of the process, so that everybody can decide together if that fit is correct. In Q2, we received twenty-six. Interest rates, rates went up, the market went south, things got a little hectic, and people got a little scared, and companies held back their cash. And they said, while we still need to expand, and we still need to grow, we're gonna wait and see. There was an election, right? There's a lot of uncertainty. Companies hate uncertainty, that is a fact, and so we need to provide as much consistency as we possibly can. Received twenty-six, we provided to eleven of these responses, about thirty-eight hundred jobs, so exactly half of what you saw in the previous quarter, but exactly the wages actually went up, because the quality of companies that we responded to, at least with, from a wage perspective, went up, because those were the ones that making the motion and the movements in that time of uncertainty, the ones that had the most cash on hand or capital. So, this is what it looks like, folks, it's a funnel, okay? You start at the top, and they call that a PIF, a project information form, that's a lead, that's what I was just explaining to you. And so you start there, and you answer that, you respond to it, and then you see if there's interest. And then if there's interest, then it moves to an RFAI process, which is a request for information, and this is much more detailed, much more in-depth. And this is where our partners come in extensively. The City of Maricopa, the utilities, all the players come to bear, and we go through the process with the site selectors, which we'll talk about in a minute, and all the company representatives, not necessarily disclosing at any time who they are, what they represent, what they do, other than the general concept, and then we start going through these hours of meetings. Then it goes through onsite interviews. Then they do what's called a quality-of-life interview, if it continues to progress, if they're still interested, okay? Against all the other competition you have out there. Might be other states, might be other cities, might be other locations. Then it goes to this quality-of-life, this is where the Chamber of Commerce comes in, folks. This is where the executives bring their families, and they check out the schools, they check out the transportation avenues, they check out the shopping, they check out all the things that Maricopa has to offer, and they want to talk to people. In fact, we have had companies that have gone, and the owners have hung out at Walmart and just talked to people all by themselves throughout the day to see what their raw opinions were. You never know, just like Councilmember Manfredi said earlier in his, uh, report to the council and report to the audience, is that sometimes you end up talking to people, and they have no idea who you are. The same happens for you, in, when you're out in public. Sometimes you're talking to them, and they could be an investigating company, you just don't know, okay? So then it moves to decision-making process. Those executives might move fast, they might move slow, we don't know. In the end, they then choose a finalist. Then they go through their financing. All the while, they've been saying their financing is in place, but we don't control the banks, you don't control the banks, we don't know what's going to happen. Then they start going through site improvements, then construction, then you might get down to the point in which they are actually cutting the ribbon and opening the doors. And even then, things can go awry. These are the variables that exist in company location. This is the challenge that, that besets all of us. This is why MITA exists, is to help go through this, to help hold, hand-hold through these, and to work closely with the city and you all, because otherwise, it doesn't happen. It takes all hands on deck. If we parcel it out, we, we go back to silos, it doesn't work as well, when you're bringing everybody to bear, okay? It's, again, like any good general or an offensive line, you want as many people focused on the, the offense as you possibly can. So, I told you earlier about existing buildings. This is just a slide showing that there are tons of folks that respond to us through the leads, or the leads that we get, that ask for existing building space. I'm not suggesting that you all provide that, I'm not suggesting we provide it, even though there's always possibilities, this is where it comes down to the role of government and who wants to spend money, right? But there's a really interesting factoid in here. If you'll look at that, you'll see on that pie chart, existing or built-to-suit, built-to-suit-only, or existing building. Well, folks, there's two categories that have existing building in it, aren't there? And there's only nineteen percent of those that are looking to build from the ground up. So when you're talking about the odds of winning, do the math. Figure out, it does this work for us, okay? Now, again, I don't have the answer to this. MITA doesn't have, you know, fifty million dollars laying in the bank, ready to build a building, and staff it with somebody, I wish we did, but that's not how it works. So, this is one of our challenges, whether we're working with the developers, we're working with investors, whether we're working with, uh, folks that want to come in and partner and build something, uh, partner with a, a landowner and build something, this is the challenge, right here, is that we don't have enough buildings already ready for them to move into. Now, there are those that will change their mind as they go through the process, there are those that will say, no problem, I, I was originally looking for existing, but I'll move to built-to-suit, but they are far less than those that want to move into a building that exists. So just FYI. So the teamwork includes site selectors. So again, what is a site selector? Why is that important? Well, this is critical, folks. A site selector is someone who is hired by a large corporation, might even be a mid-sized corporation, to say, scour the entire United States, every single state, every single city, every single county, and give me the best sites, and then I will start narrowing down. This is like the MLS, if you're looking at, uh, the real estate site, right? And you have fifty million houses to look at in Arizona, imagine doing that nationwide. That is what site selectors do. And you would think that you could go to a site selector, and you could just sell them on how great Maricopa is, and you could say, we have this great story, it's fantastic. Those work, and they work well. But I'm gonna get to some really important data points that you need to understand, that that's not what sells them. What sells them is all the other things, all those other variables that have to match up if they want to land in a space like Maricopa, okay? So, this is off of a site selector of a project called Project Maximus. And Project Maximus ended up being Samsung. Now, they didn't know this was gonna be Samsung at the time, but I'm gonna show you some really important things here. These were the critical location factors after the fact by the site selector who worked with this corporation, again, under the auspice of knowing it was Project Maximus only, for six-plus years. Six-plus years. This is what they did. They said property size and configuration. So they need to know the available land, the overall site dimensions, you know, the building layouts, the flexibility for different phasing. They needed the surround land use to be suitable, which means their immediate neighbors, avoidance of residential areas, commercial, non-industrial, other non-compatible characteristics when impacting a brand or an image, okay? It was mandatory for them, transportation access, that they had state highway access, primary site access points. Again, I don't want to read all of these things, but this is what's critical. Utilities, the electric, the water, the sewer, the natural gas, they had to have proximity. The last thing they want to do is go and say, well, I'm gonna pay to move the, the, the nearest water line, six miles down the road, to my site over here, because that just cost me thirty million dollars. Well, that's on my balance sheet, folks, and they're gonna go, I'm gonna look for another site. It's just easier, right? Because it's gonna cost them so much. So these are some of the challenges that you have to deal with. Also, the overall ease of implementation, the low timeline, okay? So, again, avoidance of factors that may impact overall project implementation. This is for cause for, excuse, sorry, execution delays, ability for site, community to meet the project, standards and the goals. Access to the workforce. No one's gonna invest a hundred and fifty million dollars, or a billion dollars, if they don't have a workforce to come work for them. Those of you who own companies, you know how hard it is to hire folks. Those of you who own companies, you know how hard it is to hire folks. If you want to hire five thousand people, where are you gonna get them? Are they all gonna come from Maricopa? Are they gonna drive to Maricopa? Are they in the service area? Look, we have a fantastic workforce here, and we know that a lot of folks would actually quit their jobs in the valley and stay and work here if that was, if that was here, if there was an option. But it's not gonna fit everybody, but you gotta start somewhere. So this is a really important thing, and it's a great selling point for Maricopa. But at the same time, it's still a concern. And then finally, the community fit. Remember I told you the Chamber of Commerce, how they fit into this picture, right? This is where they fit. So again, they need to figure out, where are they gonna be a good partner for the community? So, again, just giving you a little brief on site selectors, this shows you, after they had narrowed everything down, this particular corporation said, we wanted to be in the, you know, Midwest to the East, find us a few states, this is what they came back with, based on these sites, they said, okay, we're gonna do Quebec, which is international, Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, Mississippi, and then we're gonna have three in each of those, and those were the finalists out of thousands. So imagine Maricopa's name in there, you're still in competition with at least ten or twelve others, okay? This is the game, this is how it's played. Then there is a sales pursuit timeline. This, once they were down to one or two sites, the site selectors and the cities or the states that were working with them, were now working together in some respects, you know, independently, and this was the timeline through COVID that they had to go back and forth to Korea on, okay? They spent somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars of their money to make this happen. Now, in the end, giving away the punchline here, and it's another story for another day, and I'll tell you all about it, but in the end, they had done all this work, they had picked a greenfield site in Mississippi, they were ready to go, they had gone to announcement, as you see there, May of 2022, from the start of February 2016, and in the end, they canceled. They built the factory in a place in Indiana that was right next to one of their suppliers, just like that, after all of this. This is what I'm trying to tell the public and you all, is this is the timeline that goes into these types of corporations. This is what goes into it, and in the end, you still never know, but what you can do is something that I always used to say, and you've heard me say it a million times, if you do nothing, you get nothing. End of story. So, traveling to drive awareness. This is just one of the things that MITA continues to do. I just wanted to give you a brief report. From June to December of 2022, I attended at least seven major sales missions and conferences. Some of them were exploratory, to find out a little bit about them, but others were to truly dive in, to learn what's there, who's there, why, why are they there, what are they looking for? You know, is there, is there, is there headway to be made, or is it something we need to let go? And I gotta tell you, the whole key, everything we do revolves around site selectors. How do we get into the site selectors? How do we find out what they're looking for? This industry changes, what corporations are looking for changes on a regular basis. So economic development professionals, developers, presidents and CEOs, real estate industry, and that whole network, from brokers to agents to commercial to real estate residential event, you never know where that contact is gonna come from. But what you do know is they're there, you just have to mine for them, you have to discover them. This is also a part of the report that I wanted you to see, is that it's about building relationships, and in building relationships, you have to talk to people. And so, again, one of the reasons that it's important that MITA is traveling, is that we gotta get outside our fishbowl, right? You cannot bring in a Samsung if Samsung's not already here, right? So, at the end of the day, we have to do our best to find a Samsung, we have to find all those suppliers, and all those things, and we gotta go out to places where they are not here, we have to be there. And so, this is just a very conservative list of folks and contacts that I have made in these travels over the first two quarters, and right now pushing about thirteen fifty on folks. And again, not everything's gonna pan out, but anytime you do contacts, it's about repetition. And one of the best pieces of advice I've gotten from some of the site selectors is that, they said, continue to go to all things site selectors are in and at. And the reason being is that they will start to see the same people, they will start to know you, they will know your story, and that will elevate you in what they're doing and what you're doing. So what's ahead for MITA? Well, we're gonna continue to do lots of outreach, lots of travel, lots of work with site selectors, marketing, MITA and the City of Maricopa and our partnership, because that's what we're doing, right? Is that we're in this together. This is about educating the outside world about how great this city is, and what it has to offer. So we're gonna answer and drive all possible leads. This is a full steam ahead kind of thing. Continued evolution, expansion of available business sites. This is something I'd like to see our portfolio continue to grow here. And when I say ours, it's not mine, it's not yours, it's individual and respected landowners that have decided that instead of doing homes on that particular property, they're gonna do commercial industry. So, that's what we're gonna continue to work on. Aligning all efforts with the strategic direction of the city. I'll be there on Thursday with you all, as you go through your futures planning, and I love, and look forward to seeing where you're going with it, because we want those same things that I learned there, and that you give direction for, we can go out and tout in those folks that we're meeting. We're gonna drive awareness of targeted marketing, okay? This is not something that we blast and blanket, we do it on purpose, we do it with a reason, and something that we're trying to accomplish for it. Transportation, infrastructure advocacy, not gonna stop attending ADAT meetings with Mayor Smith and others, right? It's so important that transportation, you saw that one of the key factors, transportation is key. Applying for grants, this is something that my staff has been doing some research on, and while it's not perfect, and we don't, there's a lot of questions still, the reality is, we have some grant writers that have been very successful in this city that we're gonna learn from. And the reason is, is we have found some locations in this country where organizations just like MITA have participated in grant writing, and have actually been able to earn, i.e. through the grant writing process, been awarded enough money to put up a building, okay? Now, we may not be apples-to-apples there, right? We may not have the same state laws as they have. There's a lot of research to be done, and it may not turn out to be anything, but in my view of leaving no stone unturned, what the key needs to be is that we need to go down a path that says, we will look for every avenue in which we can complete and add that one last thing, the straw that breaks the camel's back, right? Because when these companies are looking at us and all these other potentials out there, if that one last thing does it, I mean, I've sat where you sit, I've been in those meetings where a hundred thousand dollars makes or breaks a ten-million-dollar project, a hundred grand. And you think that's silly, or are they using it as leverage? Maybe. Are they gonna walk? Maybe. If they're gone, that's not helpful, how much time has our staff and you all have spent on this? So maybe sometimes it's just easier to find a hundred grand. My point is, is if we can participate in that process in any way, shape, or form, then I think there's value there, and so we're going to explore it, we're gonna do our best to find out about it. And then finally, building additional relationships. Folks, this is a relationship game, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. This is how it works. So, and MITA, it's full steam ahead. I could talk to all you night, you know that, I love economic development, it is so much fun, I love the City of Maricopa. I hope you garnered a high-level vision of what we're trying to accomplish here, and how we're trying to do it. We're not perfect, we haven't solved every ale yet, we're still learning, and we're gonna continue to learn. But I can tell you this, the pressure, and the heat, and all the variables that go into it, make that diamond. This is where we're at with the City of Maricopa. We are poised, with your leadership, with the staff you have, with the ability of the things, the assets that we have, we're there, we're on the precipice. We just need that last domino to fall, and it starts a chain reaction. We're so close.